We'll call the order of the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the north wall of the Legislative Chamber, as well as an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First couple items of business include Item A, approval of minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 26, 2024, and Item B, call for meeting on set Tuesday, April 16, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to resolutions. We have resolutions, Items C through H, which could include adjournment. Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Was there anybody that came to speak on any of these resolutions, C through H? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes Board of Equalization. We will now jump into Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are Items 1A and B, A being the approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 26, 2024, and B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, April 9, 2024. Do I have a motion a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda for Items A through K. I've been advised that in Item G, we need to remove the word "biennium" at the beginning, just as a correction there to that agreement. Otherwise, we can have a motion a second as amended. Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Discussion items on consent agenda. See Commissioner Kavanaugh.
(inaudible) just a few questions for the record. Item B, resolution to approve the attached agreement between Douglas County and Douglas Department of Health and Human Services for detention services. And I think Mr. LaFleur is here. Yeah. If you could just outline for us quickly what this does.
Yes, sir. Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center.
Could you just speak up?
Sure. Mark LaFleur, Douglas County Youth Center. This contract is between us and HHS to maintain youth at the youth center as they prepare to go to their next location. And in many cases, that location is Carney Residential Treatment Center.
You mean, holding children at the youth center for what?
They're, the children are at the youth center, and HHS pays for them once they have a commitment to go to Carney. And once they go to Carney, this contract, we bill them for the days that they are waiting before they go.
I see. And approximately, how many children fall into this category on average?
Oh, I would say on average, it could range from three to five a month.
Okay. Do you know what the per diem?
The daily per diem is $334.
Three forty-four?
Three thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yes, sir.
And this is, if you don't know, I'm just curious, what's the average daily population today?
Oh, I'm not sure what our population is today. Eighty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Other questions on consent? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, there's just a couple of others on this. There is a asbestos abatement Item J for our property at 1101 South 42nd Street. And that's our big midtown campus. I'm just wondering, what specific building is 1101 South 42nd? I should know, but I don't. We're doing, we're doing abatement of asbestos in some of these older facilities, which is pretty common with buildings built, you know, before, 50 years ago, which are a lot of them on 42nd Street. Does anyone know what the specific property is? No?
(inaudible)
Sorry.
So there's two buildings. One of them is the HHS building.
Patrick, can you identify yourself?
Pat, I can't. Okay. Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator. So, the 1101 building would be what we call the horse barn, which is the long vacant building just to the north of the building that we use for HHS. I don't know if there's anybody from public properties on, because this item's on the agenda. Normally, there is somebody, at least on Zoom, to answer questions, but I can't tell. I don't know anything about the specific project, but I can tell you that that's the building. It's been vacant for a long time.
I thought that we were going to be discussing that as part of the Provondra Report later on. That's why I was asking.
Right. We are going to be discussing that as one of the projects. And so, and I apologize if there's not anybody on from public properties. I'll follow up with them on that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Other comments on consent agenda? If not, we will vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to recognitions and proclamations. The first one under 3A was the recognition of the retirement of a Douglas County employee, Paulette Jones, who worked for Douglas County Health Center for 24 years. She wasn't able to make it today, but we thank Paulette for her many years of service to Douglas County and the Motion by Borgeson, second by, who was it? Boyle?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to the Item B, which I will toss to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution recognizing April 2024 as National County Government Awareness Month, whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serve more than 330 million Americans and provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas since 1991, the month of April has been recognized as National County Government Month, an annual celebration of county government. And whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas, under the leadership of the National Association and county's president, Mary Jo McGuire, NACO is highlighting county leadership through the lens Forward Together, celebrating the role of county governments in connecting, inspiring, and leading as intergovernmental partners. And whereas, the role includes a responsibility to inspire county residents to engage with their communities and to lead by highlighting our strengths as intergovernmental partners. And whereas Douglas County and all counties take pride in our responsibilities to protect and enhance the health, welfare, safety, and futures of our residents in practical and cost-saving ways. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby declares the month of April 2024 as National County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to learn about the important role that counties play in the well-being of our communities and to participate in any county government awareness appreciation event dated this ninth day of April 2024. I mean, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Rogers. Comment?
I, could I just, I have a prepared statement that I'd like to read as well. That National County Government Month is a special time designated to highlight the importance of county governments here in Douglas County, Nebraska, and across the United States. It gives us an opportunity to raise awareness about the essential services we provide to our communities. County governments are at the forefront of delivering critical services such as mental health, long-term care, general assistance, criminal justice, transportation, infrastructure, public health, just to name a few. They serve as the closest level of government to people, often being responsible for addressing the unique needs and challenges of our local communities. During National County Government Month, it's important to recognize the hard work and dedication of us as commissioners, other elected officials, volunteers, and especially our wonderful and amazing staff, who work tirelessly to enhance the quality of life for our residents. It also is an opportunity to educate the public about the various functions of county governments and how we impact daily life. By increasing awareness and understanding of the vital role of county governments, National County Government Awareness Month helps strengthen the relationships between counties and our communities, ultimately contributing to a more effective governance and stronger sense of local pride and engagement. And because we're going to hear from him in a little bit, and I forgot to put on the elections, we also run elections, that again, it just goes to show you how many different things we as county government touch and do and provide to our citizens. And we should be most proud of that and continue to work to educate those in all arenas within our community of the good work that we do and the wonderful staff we have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you for reading those, because I forgot to bring my copies that I went through last night. But I'd like to protest this resolution. Apparently, you do not understand the concept of republicanism, separation of powers between the federal and the state governments, but it doesn't necessarily allow you to supersede your citizens who you work for in forming associations and getting leadership from a national association of county governments. That's a little bit like the beginning there when we had Confederation of States before we formed the Congress. But we did not elect you to do that. We want you to get your leadership from us, we, the people, under the Constitution of the United States. Now, I know you were president of that organization for a few years. I also don't appreciate paying dues out of my pocket for you to go to those organizations or to pay for help bringing them in here to lobby you before they lobby the state government. That is working against we, the citizens, who actually own the government. So, please rethink your resolution and reword it if you want to recognize county governments in general, but disavow yourself from the leadership by them. That's my fine and dandy. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Ford Momarts Brown, 1511 Farnham. And you already acknowledged that you left off elections. But since this is national, things that other counties nationwide do is not just mental health, but medical health. Some counties take care of roads and sewage and other important things, clean drinking water. My uncle, until he retired, was in charge of roads for Brown County. Now, my last name is impossible to spell, but yet everybody in Brown County, Wisconsin, the county seat is Green Bay, knows how to spell it because his name was on every sign entering the county. But there are just, there is a plethora of things that are, I'm sure I'm forgetting some too. But it's, county government provides a lot at the behest of the voters and the taxpayers. And I don't think there's anything wrong with a national association that's going to promote county governments. In Nebraska, there's a problem with county governments because the state government takes so much away from their independence and their authority that would better enable them to do their job if they were more empowered. So, I would endorse and support this resolution. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Anybody else? Saying none, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. The last proclamation, proclamation C, I will toss to Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's in regards to Second Chance Month, and it reads, whereas Second Chance Month is a nationwide campaign to unlock opportunities for millions of Americans with a criminal record who have paid their debt to society. And whereas, on March 29, 2024, President Joe Biden declared April as Second Chance Month, affirming the administration's support for removing the unnecessary barriers that prevent those with a criminal record from becoming productive members of society. And whereas, every year, more than 650,000 people are released from state and federal prisons, some leaving with only a few dollars and a bus ticket to start their new lives. In total, over 70 million Americans have a criminal history record, which can make it hard to secure a steady job, safe housing, affordable healthcare, or a good education, all important things to have when trying to build a good life. And whereas, after incarcerated individuals serve their time, they should have the opportunity to reintegrate into society fully. It benefits not just those individuals, but all society, and is the best strategy to reduce recidivism. And whereas, during Second Chance Month, we lift up all those who have made mistakes, are committed to rejoining society and making meaningful contributions. And whereas, by focusing on prevention, reentry, and social support, rather than incarceration, we can ensure that America is a land of second chances and opportunity for all. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, this board hereby recognized April 2024 as Second Chance Month in Douglas County, and I will move on to approval.
Motion by Rogers, second by Borgeson. Any other comments on this item?
Well, I was going to make a comment or suggestion that it be amended to include reenfranchisement, but that was before I heard the resolution read, and I think it's covered there. But I should like to see, oh, I'm sorry, Ford, 15 Momarts Brown, 1511 Farnham, or you can just call me the man in the street. I should also like to see a greater emphasis placed on helping convicts or felons, whatever, get back into society by helping them to get jobs. You talk to any of them, and they'll tell you the hardest, quite truthfully, the hardest struggle they face is finding employment. I'm not a felon myself, but I have some friends who are, and I've known a lot more. And that really is the hardest thing. How can you become a positively contributing member of society if you can't get a job, a job to get yourself a home, to buy yourself a car, I wish I could buy a car, but to pay your dues, to buy groceries, to just function as a citizen. And I really think that's the biggest area that we need to address with people being released from prison or even bypassing prison and getting back into society, is that they are able to get jobs. And I think a prospective employer has a right to know, but I don't think they have a right to exclude them automatically based on that, any more than they have a right to exclude them based on the color of their skin, or the church they attend, or whom they love, or anything like that. It's, for the most part, it's irrelevant. Now, you don't want a thief as your bank teller, but there are other places where they're excluded for no reason other than that they have a criminal record. And, you know, some of it is nonviolent crimes, you know. An ounce of marijuana back in the 70s or 80s can keep them from finding gainful employment. And I would like to see more emphasis on that. If you can amend the resolution to include that, that would be terrific. But I would like to see you working in that direction.
Thank you.
Reenfranchisement, though, would be good, too.
Thank you. Other comments on this item?
Lee C. Minus, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Thank you, Commissioners. I believe in second chances. I believe in the things that the county does for those criminally involved. However, I don't think enough is done with the second chance. For one thing, when you're in prison and jail, you get exposed to a lot of racism by the system and by the inmates. I think that if you're going to have a second chance, you need to have culture competency leaving the system. And there's other resources and programs that, and Ford mentioned it, like availability for economic advancement, but definitely the racist nature of the criminal system, then that needs to be deprogrammed in these individuals that are trying to get back into society. It's a horrible situation, how they got in and how they're getting out. And then also, I think that mental, no, behavioral health is part of that. They were locked up for the term of their imprisonment, and that has to have an effect. And then you see there's the movies, the inmate goes out into the right of way or whatever it is, and they're just let go. And I think that's happening less and less in Nebraska. But still, with the overpopulation, the people are not going to have a experience where they feel like they're being invited back into society. And I think the second chance idea is about that, that we understand what you did, and that's why you're in the, in the system, but this is at the point where it's another chapter in your life. But somebody's got to, has got to turn the page, and it's not going to be them necessarily. We've got to help them turn the page. We have to get them economic opportunities and resources, and also deprogramming behaviorally and the discriminatory nature of the criminal justice system. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on the Second Chance Resolution, or excuse me, proclamation?
Kenneth Anderson, 8443 Craig Avenue, Irvington. I heard the phrase, paid back, paid their dues to society, something like that, of that nature. And I stand before you as a victim of so many different crimes. And generally, the victims are not paid back. The term "paid back to society" involves paying back to everybody but the victim in so many of these cases. And I've got a case here at 10 o'clock that I got to walk over to where I'm a victim of, and I don't expect to be paid back there either. And I think the first step towards getting these people on the straight and narrow, the offenders on the straight and narrow, is to have them pay back to their victims. And I don't see that being done, because I speak from experience. More times than I can keep track of, I've been paid back one time out of more than I can keep track of. I'm a security contact for a building that keeps getting broken into, and they leave the property damaged. And I'm going to go see if I can get a word in edgewise up here at the district court over there at 10 o'clock, and see if I can get some of those damages fixed that this perpetrator left the property with of his own making. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Once again, I'm not totally against the theory of this, but I am against the wording and the emphasis. We, the citizens, expect the emphasis to be on prevention of crimes in the first place, and the arrest for crimes and protection of the citizens from those that commit the crimes, number two. Number three, yes, we want to see everybody be successful once they pay their dues. But in today's society, and with the flood of illegals coming in across our border, which those people have no idea of our culture, but they're forcing it down our throats. They're leaving their trash all over Omaha, and yet they say we're not a sanctuary city. But how in the world are you going to give everybody, those millions of people now that have come across the border, when they start rioting in our streets? How are you going to do that? So please change the wording, disassociate it from a national association, and focus on prevention and education of the citizens and those that would commit the crimes. Thank you.
Ford Momarts Brown, 1511 Farnham. I know I've already spoken.
Yeah, you can only speak once, Ford. I'm sorry.
Well, this isn't necessarily on that topic.
We're going to have to keep the same rules for everybody. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
This is to register a complaint against the last speaker. He was offensive.
Can we turn off this mic? All right. We turned off his mic, Larry. Thank you for your passion. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm going to need you to sit down.
That's patronizing.
No, I do appreciate it, but you also have to follow the rules. All right. Anybody else on this proclamation? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We're going to jump to our presentations. Our first one is an overview of the upcoming election, primary election on May 14, 2024, including new voter ID requirements. We have our election commissioner, Mr. Cruz, and deputy.
I'm going to move this up here. Okay, I know it's there somewhere. It's like, come on, behave. Again, this is in my way. There we go, from the beginning.
And then, is there a keyboard? I just, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Cruz, Douglas County Election Commissioner, one twenty two twenty West Center Road. And I can let Chris speak for himself.
I'm Chief Deputy Chris Carruthers, same address.
Same address. So, well, we just thank you for the invitation to come and give a little update on the upcoming election. Obviously, presidential years are always our largest elections in Douglas County and across the country. So first, I would like to start off by thanking my deputy. He's been my deputy since I arrived in twenty sixteen, and we've had a wonderful working relationship. And it's great to have somebody like him with me. So I think many of you know, with your help, in twenty nineteen, October of twenty nineteen, we moved to the new location. It's, we've been there five years now, Bel Air Plaza, hundred twenty second and center. So it's been a great location for us, a great location for the voters. There's much more room inside, many more security measures. Parking's wonderful, access is great. So we really have no complaints other than you can always use more space, right? So our website is a great tool. It's vottdouglascounty.com. You can go here, you can see on the homepage, the icons there that are most often used, register to vote, vote early by mail, obviously, election results, and then if you'd like to be an election worker. So currently, as of April first in Douglas County, we have three hundred and fifty five thousand, five hundred and seventy two registered voters. So that number's changing every day. We're constantly doing list maintenance, new registrations are coming in, people are moving out, people pass away, et cetera, et cetera. You can see the breakdown here. Hundred and thirty one thousand Democrats, basically a hundred twenty six thousand Republicans. About twenty five percent are nonpartisans at ninety thousand. And then we have libertarians at about fifty six hundred, and the legal marijuana now power party, just a little under twenty four hundred there. So for this election in May, it will take us about two thousand election workers. About fourteen hundred of those will be poll workers at our two hundred and eight polling places around the county. Other election workers are, you know, folks that are telephone operators. We have machine operators, we have extra board workers, essentially replacements if people get ill or can't show up for some reason. There's just all kinds of folks that make that happen. I know some folks in here have been poll workers for us in the past. I know Colby has. So we appreciate it. We, we obviously could not do this without all of these volunteers. In Douglas County, in Douglas County alone, we have three thousand, two hundred and sixty seven different ballots that are distributed to voters via early voting or the polling place. We program those in-house, we print those in-house, and then we get all of those distributed so that the voter has the correct ballot. The other thing is regarding our polling places, we couldn't do it without our community partners, two hundred and eight different physical locations. You know, I, I know Metro Community College, we're using four of their locations this year. They've been a great partner, just outstanding churches, car dealership, schools, you name it, everybody works with us, and we really appreciate it. So your options for voting, early voting by mail. So you must request a ballot prior to the election. Ballots begin to be mailed out thirty five days before, so that was yesterday. So we've got about seventy two thousand requests in for this election. We've mailed out about fifty six thousand ballots between yesterday and today. So if voters have requested a ballot, they should start to arrive in mailboxes near the end of this week. If you don't get your ballot, we're processing them every day and we're mailing them out every day. So just patience is a virtue, you'll be getting it. If you do have a question, though, please reach out to our office. Early voting in person begins Monday at our office, eight thirty to five, out at the hundred and twenty second and center location. And of course, voting at the polling place on May fourteenth, polls will be open from eight AM to eight PM. Now, on our website, which might need Colby's, do I go to share?
Go up to new share.
Yep. Right there. Okay. Thank you. So on our website, this is a great feature for voters, right here on our homepage, if you go to find your voting information, if you put your house number in, we'll do the election commission here, and then the zip code. And then just hit search, and we'll go to the one twenty two. So this right here will tell you your polling place if you choose to vote at your polling place. It'll show you a picture of your polling place. I'll talk about the new voter ID in a little bit, but we've got the reminder right up there with the logo from the state. Let's bring it. And then you can come down here and get a sample ballot that is specific to you, the voter. So we'll do the nonpartisan ballot. If you click on that, this is what nonpartisans, who, if you lived at the election commission, this is what you would vote on. So you can go there and find your ballot. We know that this location is in the city, so there's six city charter amendments for those who are in the city, and then the races that you choose to vote on. So again, if you have questions, you can go to our website, vottdouglascounty.com, right there on the front page. Reach out to our office at four 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 vote if you need help navigating this, but this is a great tool. So we'll see if I can go back to my presentation without. Yep. Uh, okay. Oh, well, we'll just go right down here and start. Okay. And that's okay. So ballots will be coming in the same colored envelopes they always have. We haven't changed a thing on that. Again, here's a solid, a sample ballot. Remember, if you got an early voting ballot, you gotta sign it in order for it to count. You gotta sign it, be sure and sign it. So be sure you do that. Drop boxes, we have thirteen drop boxes around the county. They're empty daily, they're safe, secure. We have cameras on all of them. We encourage voters to use our drop boxes. It's the most direct way from the voter to us. You put your ballot in the drop box, our personnel picks it up. So we encourage that. We also encourage voters, as soon as they're comfortable with voting their ballot, to return it to us. So voter ID is new this year. So voter ID was voted on by the voters of Nebraska in the November of twenty twenty two election, and it passed last legislative session, L B five fourteen, was passed by the legislature, the governor signed it, signed it and enacted, enacted it. So now it's time to implement it, and that's what we're doing. So if you like to vote in person at our office or at the polling place, the easiest and simplest way is to bring your driver's license or state ID. Ninety seven percent of Nebraskans have a driver's license or state ID. That's the simplest. There are other forms of accepted ID. You can find those on our website, and I'll go over a few of those here in a little bit. Now, if you'd like to vote early by mail, then you do that at the time of request. And in Douglas County, we added a place on our green cards that we send out. If you're on the early voting list, a box right here, you just write your driver's license or state ID on there. So again, that's the simplest and easiest, but there are other forms of ID that you can use. So accepted. So the ID must have your name and photo, and it can be expired. So if you have an old driver's license for some reason, you're no longer using it, that's an acceptable form of ID, Nebraska driver's license for Nebraska voting. You can also use a passport, a military ID, tribal ID, a political subdivision, so Douglas County IDs would work, Nebraska college or university, hospital, assisted living or nursing home facilities can use the face sheet. There's just a whole host of different items you can use. Items not accepted. So things that don't have your name and photo, birth certificate, Medicare, Medicaid, social security card, out of state driver's license, a private high school because it's not a political subdivision. So like Scott, Great Prep, Marion Concordia High School would not be because it's not a political subdivision. But public high schools are. So Miller North, Burke, et cetera, would be. Store membership cards, can't use your Costco or Sam's card, it's not a political subdivision, a utilities bill or a bank statement, and you can't use a voter registration or acknowledgement card. So what if you cannot afford an ID? If you cannot afford an ID, you can get a free ID for voting from the Nebraska DMV. You will need a birth certificate and other documents. If you need a Nebraska birth certificate, you can obtain a free Nebraska birth certificate from Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. The important thing on this is if you're going to get a free ID from the DMV, please, please, please plan ahead and don't just show up there. Either look on their website or call them to find out exactly what documents you may or may not need, because we sure would hate for somebody to show up, not have what they need and have to come back. So you can call our office and we can try and help as well, or the Secretary of State's office, but, but please plan ahead for that. So if you cannot get an ID for some reason, you can complete what they call a reasonable impediment certification. That is on our website. We can also mail you one if you contact our office. So it's if you have an inability to obtain an acceptable form of ID due to a disability or illness that prevents the voter from obtaining an ID or having a, having the lack of having a birth certificate or other required document to obtain an ID, or you have a religious objection to being photographed. You do have to sign the form, there's an oath on there that you're swearing that, you know, you cannot get an ID due to one of these forms, one of these reasons. You will cover uniformed and overseas citizens at the Absentee Voting Act, they are exempt from over voter ID, or military personnel, people working in embassies overseas, you know, things of that nature. So if you forgot your ID, if you do it in person at our office or on election day, you have the opportunity, if you're able to go retrieve it and come back before polls, polls close to you. That's the simplest and easiest. We understand everybody might not be able to do that. So if you are unable to do that, you can vote provisionally. And then the voter will have seven days after the election to come to our office at a hundred twenty second and center and present their photo ID to us in person. So the two, until the Tuesday after the election to do that. Now, you do have to come yourself with your ID. So if a spouse or a friend or a relative, you know, I can't bring Chris's ID and come, I have to bring my own ID. And we will be open on that Saturday after the election from nine AM to eleven AM to accommodate voters who may not be able to come during work hours or the hours were open from eight thirty to five during the weekday. So election night release schedule, the results. It's the same as always, eight PM will be early voting results. So anybody who requested an early voting ballot and turned it in up through Monday will be released at eight o'clock. Then eight forty five are voters that voted from eight to two, nine forty five is two PM to eight PM voting, ten forty five, you know, and then we just keep adding until we need to, essentially. So there's always some ballots counted after election day. This is nothing new. We do it every single election. So ballots turned in on election day, so those are early voting ballots that are turned into us by Dropbox, essentially on election day, are usually counted the Friday after the election, because we have to check all those in, we have to check signatures, we have to make sure folks didn't go to their polling place, you know, and try and vote twice. Now, we, we don't have a problem with that, but, but we gotta do our due diligence on that. And then provisional ballots. By law, we have until the second Friday following the election to go through all those provisionals and the new provisionals this year, of course, if somebody, you know, forgot their ID and had to come to our office. Now, these timelines can be moved up if, depending on the workload, but this is typically what we do. So here's just one final slide with some important dates. Voter registration, Monday, April twenty ninth is the last day to vote any, the last day anyway, other than in person at our office. So online would be the big one. But a voter registration drive, the libraries, things of that nature. Friday, May third at six PM is the absolute last day to register to vote for this election in our office. We're open till six PM. That is also the last day and time to request an early voting ballot be mailed. And then you can see we have extended hours for the convenience of voters. On Tuesday and Thursday, May seventh and ninth, we'll be open until six PM, and then the Saturday before the election will be open from nine to one. So with that, I would just, again, like to thank our community partners for being a great polling place. Partners, our poll workers who we can do it without, and we always appreciate the support of the board. So with that, I'll, we'll take any questions you might have, and thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you both. We'll go to comments, starting with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank. We appreciate this update. I've said often that the election commissioners' service are essential. You are the air supply of our democracy, having fair and accurate elections, which, based on working on elections for a long time and, and hearing your reports since I've been on the board, I think is the state here. Let me just ask you this. Since you've been election commissioner, has there been a prosecuted case of voter fraud in Douglas County?
Not since I've been here, twenty sixteen. Chris has been here a little bit before me.
Yeah. So we have, I think you said, three hundred and fifty five thousand, five hundred and seventy two registered voters here. And is that an all-time high?
It's not. In the twenty twenty election, we were at an all-time high of about three hundred and seventy thousand. The reason for that, again, is our list maintenance.
No, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, but no, it's not.
To the point where, out of all those hundreds of thousands of voters.
Right.
Over a long period of time, haven't had any voter fraud cases at all. So, you know, it kind of begs the question of why are we imposing on our voters these additional requirements to exercise their constitutional right to vote? You don't have a constitutional right to a driver's license, and you don't have a constitutional requirement to carry any kind of ID in the United States of America if you're a citizen. And so the idea that we need to impose on people additional, non-constitutional requirements for them to exercise their constitutional votes is unfortunate. And as a direct response of people questioning. And as a direct response of people questioning the integrity of our pretty darn good voting system and, uh, addressing a problem that doesn't exist. We have fair elections. And thanks to you, and Chris, and your staff, uh, we're gonna have another fair election. It's unfortunate that some people who lose elections, uh, don't want to just take that as the luck of the draw. That's how democracy works, uh, majority rules, but have to question the integrity of the election, which is an end question. There is no question. You run fair and honest elections. Uh, you're a Republican, Chris is a Democrat. Nobody's ever questioned your integrity and your objectivity. I'm a Democrat, we have Republicans on this board. Nobody ever questions the great job that you do. I just want to make this point, that I appreciate the advice on how I can exercise my constitutional right. Actually, I sent in my request some time ago. But, there is no election fraud going on. And people who say there is, aren't just making that up. It's not true. I won't say they're lying, but they are not telling the truth. The truth is, we have fair elections. There is no election fraud going on here in Douglas County, in a large part due to the excellent job that you do and your staff does. And I want to thank you, because, like I said, your elections are the air supply of our democracy. And so, I look forward to exercising my constitutional right to, uh, vote. And I think hundreds of thousands of other Douglas County residents will as well. And we appreciate your help in making that as easy as possible. And this explanation really helps. I mean, I consider myself fairly well-informed voter, but this helps a lot. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll jump to Commissioner Boyle.
Oh. I couldn't, I couldn't agree with Commissioner Kavanaugh more. I, the system now is basically, if, if I don't win, it's rigged. And that's not the way democracy works. And so, um, democracy is at risk here. And I want to point out the fact that, that the, that your, your ethics are unquestionable. Um, your, your diligence to make sure that this election has integrity is admirable. And so, it's not easy to remain nonpartisan and make sure that, that the, the rules are followed and that this is fair and honest. And so, I think that a lot of, uh, other folks who don't believe that have to get over that. Uh, the, I do have a couple of questions too.
Sure.
You mentioned, uh, about preventing folks from voting twice, where you've got, uh, people who may show up at their, at, at their precinct to vote, but have turned in a mail-in ballot. When, how do you verify that? Do you do, are there, manual, do you manually verify signatures?
We do, we do. So on the early, um, voting ballots, when these are returned to our office, well, I should say, signatures are very verified twice. Once on the request, and then once when they're returned again, uh, on the envelope. And so that's why we hire a bunch of temporary employees. We're very, very fortunate. We have a lot of our temps are returnees that have been there with us for a long, long time, even pre-dating me. And it's just great to have them come back, you know? It's like getting the family back together at a family reunion, honestly. They're just so great. But yes, we've got 40 workstations in the office. And so, a human looks at every signature twice. Presumably, that's two different individuals. I mean, by chance, it could be the same person, but when you're dealing with that number. And then, if there's a question, then it'll go to a supervisor. If there's still a question, it will go to Betsy, who's our by-mail coordinator. She's been there 27 years, I think, so she's done this a while. Then it goes to the office manager, elections manager. And if there's still a question, then Chris and I get to check it out. And, you know, look, we'll send letters, or, because we understand, signatures change over time. But sometimes, we, often, I should say, we have numerous signatures on file for individuals. Because we will scan signatures on their file from early voting request forms. We have agency sharing with the, the DMV, you know, different agencies. So we often, so that's a long answer to your question, to say yes.
That's good. So, so I think that's, there's some reassurance to those folks who, uh, feel like computer systems are not, uh, the way to do this. There are people involved in this process.
Absolutely, 100%.
So that's a reassurance. And then, if someone, say, for example, decides to vote by mail, but they don't get their ballot in, can they show up to the precinct to, to vote at that point?
So, if you do a by-mail ballot, you have to have this in our possession by 8:00 PM on election night. Either in a Dropbox, or in our possession. It has to be in our possession. If, if you send it through the mail, and it comes late, unfortunately, it doesn't, doesn't count. But, if you have this, you, you can show up at your polling place. Poll workers will ask you, do you have your by-mail ballot? If you do, and you're able to retrieve it, that's the easiest and simplest way. If they don't have it, or don't have time to go and retrieve it, then they can do a provisional ballot.
Oh.
And that's where we have the, the seven business days afterwards to ensure that they didn't vote this, and try and vote at the polling place. So that's why some ballots are counted after election day, because we're working on those provisionals.
Thank you. We'll jump to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Following up on some of this, because this is very interesting. Uh, I've noticed that over the last 10 or 20 years, since we've had this option to vote by mail, increasing numbers of us voters have voted by mail. And I think we reached the 50%
Yep.
uh, tipping point some time ago. Um, do you have an idea, a projected idea of what this primary in May will be in terms of vote by mail, percentage-wise?
Uh, yeah, I think you're exactly right. I think we've kind of settled in at 50% vote by mail, and 50% vote at the polling place. That's, that's absolutely right. Now, obviously, we saw a big spike during COVID. Um, but that settled down. We, we were on an upward trajectory before COVID. And then when COVID, you know, I think it was like 97% in May of 2020. You have to remember, that was six weeks after COVID happened, in, on basically St. Patrick's Day. You know, voted by mail, and it's just, people are more familiar with it now. And you know, the number one reason we hear people like to vote by mail is because they can do it at their kitchen table. And you don't know how many times we hear people say, "I can sit down," and this may sound funny, but when there's all these judges on the ballot, they say, "I can research them," or "I can research candidates I'm not familiar with." That's the number one reason we hear that voters like to vote, vote by mail, that, that, you know, there's no pressure time, time-wise. When you're standing in the booth, you can still do that. We all have these electronic devices now. But it's, you know, it's a little more cumbersome, I guess, you might say.
It's a good thing.
It's a great thing. 50% by mail, and 50% by polling place. And, you know, voters should vote the way they're comfortable, but voters can also be assured and reassured. Both methods are completely secure.
Well, I know this is a huge job, because you mentioned that you're gonna have 2,000 people, uh, working on the election. And Douglas County itself, the entire administration, is around 2,000 people.
Okay.
You're gonna be running a, a, a group of people as large as the employee base of Douglas County. That's, that's a big, big job. And so kudos to you for managing that, in a short, short period of time.
So Douglas County will double its employees for one day.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Other comments, questions?
Okay, well, thank you for your time. If you have any question, oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
There is store 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Uh, Mr. Cruz, I have a copy for you. Uh, I'll present it to you in just a minute. But, um, I'll read, I'll read the first part of it. Sir, on this day of your presentation, I want you to have a copy of this request in hope that you will assist we the people in this petition for due process in our state and local governments here in River City in our elections. We acknowledge that you may have been duped by the Secretary of State, for example, primarily, as have many others in the election hierarchy from his office on down through your and including this board, who believes everything was safe and free and honorable in all of the elections. I'm suggesting that if it was wrong in one state, it's probably wrong in all states because of these national associations. So this, I sent to you people yesterday. Copy to all of you. It's sort of an indictment by we the people who own this government, that we don't think, and we've not been presented with the evidence that it was actually a free and safe election. We have a person that ran for governor, and ran for Secretary of State, that has requested much of the documentation and been denied all the way down the line by the Secretary of State. They're not providing we the people the evidence. You are not hearing the evidence. You are not seeing the evidence. Point in time. I'm 81 years old, and I grew up watching a lot of politics, a lot of political conventions, reading a lot, a lot of movies, a lot of documentaries, a lot of news people. I don't know if you did or not, but do you not think there's been a history of corruption in this country? Political corruption, prime example, Chicago. But now we see it all over the states. Many states are now being challenged. And it's getting to the courts finally. So you might all have a lot of orange on your face when it hits the courts here. This is an opportunity for you guys in River City to open it up for a two-way discussion with the citizens, as I've written to you many times, and I've also written the state. But anyway, this is sort of an indictment, if you want to use euphemisms. I'd like to know why we can't have early voting ballots and provisional ballots, who are done way earlier than me going to the poll. Why we have to wait till the first Friday after the election to count those? Does that not open that up for some fraud? Of course it does. I think we now have cameras maybe on the drop boxes. Were those not susceptible to some fraud by ballot harvesting, ballot dumping? Of course they were. And there's lots of evidence across this country. And we want to know that it did not happen here. And we want to see it proven to us.
30 seconds.
So that's what this is about. Having it done right here in River City as a presentation like he gave, but a refutation of what he gave. Because we are the people, and we own the government, okay? Uh, the one I sent dated yesterday to this body, I'd like to include it in the record, because this is a formal indictment of our state and local government by we the people that own the government.
Done. Thank you.
Louisiana 2709 Dewey Avenue. Uh, first off, the presentation was good. I think it was better than before the US Senate by Mr. Cruz. Uh, he only had five minutes, and, uh, there was, I think, two committee members. And they still had a meeting. The committee still had a meeting where there's only two committee members. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Cruz, you did speak for five minutes. Um, one thing I heard was that, uh, online voting is not an option. On, because, uh, the, uh, the poll, the, uh, poll booth is not, um, connected online. So to me, one of the things that works for Douglas County is that, uh, polling material is, uh, the commission's property. So, um, I understand that there's human error uh, involved when you've got a lot of people. Uh, but, uh, I don't think there is fraud. I think, uh, there would be prosecution and punishment involved if there was fraud. Um, and, uh, I appreciate the handout. I'm going to share the information of the handout. I like the simplification of the information, because it's concise and it's accurate. So I'm, I'm gonna share this information with, uh, the community. And, uh, so let's start. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others on this item?
The man in the street, 1511 Farnham. I would kind of like to answer Commissioner Kavanaugh's question. It might have been rhetorical, but it might not have. Um, as to why we have to have this unconstitutional infringement on our voting rights. And that's because one particular party, since the 50th anniversary of the Voting Rights Act, has been trying to restrict, um, access to the polls and disenfranchise as many people as possible, especially those of color. And, uh, that's just another one of these, in the state of Wisconsin, they don't even accept tribal IDs. Most of those people who live on the reservations there spend their whole life there, never leaving the registration, regi- reservation. Um, I think I need to eat some potassium. But, uh, they have no, no need for a driver's license other than to exercise their constitutional right to vote. Not a privilege, it's a right. Actually, in Australia, it's a duty and a responsibility. You can be fined if you don't. And maybe we should bring that here. But then again, you get all sorts of people who don't bother to educate themselves. They just avoid a fine. But, that's the answer to why we have to have this unconstitutional intrusion into our elections. So, just, if your question was not rhetorical, I hope that answers it.
Thank you. See, Commissioner Borgelson has a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to end this on a, um, positive note, because again, this is county government month, and elections are an integral part of, um, some of the services that we provide our citizens. Um, one thing that I would like to know, though, Brian, if any of the poll, um, and poll workers are harassed during this next election, I would ask that you let this board know ASAP. I was, um, totally disgusted at what I heard across this country um, of what happened to poll workers who are volunteering their time to make sure that we have a safe and secure election. And, um, I am very proud of the work that you and Chris and all the staff and volunteers do at the election office to make ours safe and secure. And, um, you know, I just thank you for that. And try to make sure that the poll workers know to just shut the noise off and continue to do the amazing work that they do. And I don't mean to speak for this board, but I think I can say that we are 100% behind you, your office, and all of the workers. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity, and happy election day, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Chris. You already spoke, Larry. You can work with the clerk to revise it after the meeting. Thank you. Our next item is Presentation B, a presentation of architectural study for proposed relocation of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center from the Douglas County Health Center facility to another location on 42nd Street campus. All right. We have Mr. Provandra, Mr. McGill, and I'm sure others will help lead this conversation.
Good morning. Uh, Alphavandra, 5060 Dodge Street. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to present what, uh, I've been going over for the last several weeks. Uh, at your request, uh, I looked at relocating the, uh, community, uh, mental health center located in the current health center building on the fifth floor. the current health center building on the fifth floor and also on the first level and creating a combined program for the mental health facility on the Forty-Second Street campus. If I can get this right. So what we did in our study is to start with where we ended up about a year ago. We did a comprehensive and working with Sherri and her staff program to determine what their needs were. As part of this study, we went back and revisited that. So we had a workshop with Jeff and his staff and Sherri and her executive committee and tried to refine and get that program down to maybe a more efficient version over the passage of time. We ended up cutting the program down about 10%. And that is reflected in the next several pages, the different departments. We ended up with, I'm getting my glasses for the fine print here, I apologize. We ended up with a space program that originally was about thirty-one thousand. We're ending up with one which is just over twenty-eight thousand gross square feet. So that's an ideal program. And so our task was to look at the twelve fifteen building where the current Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services is located and try to put this space program into a conceptual design layout for that. There wasn't enough square footage in that building, so we ended up taking the housing component and doing an addition to that building for that. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail. The other option was to take the eleven oh-one building, which is on the southeast corner of Forty-Second and Pacific Street, which is abandoned. I think you currently have an abatement program going on in that building and demolishing that building and putting a new mental health facility, a community mental health facility in that building. So this is the site. The building on the right is the abandoned building. The building on the left is the twelve fifteen building. There is a street. It's a kind of a private street separating those two buildings. And in each proposal, that street would be eliminated. So going on to the renovation of the twelve fifteen building, you can see in a lighter shade, that's the existing building. The darker shade is the proposed one-story addition. So the twelve fifteen building is two stories. It's approximately twenty to twenty-one thousand gross square feet. Our program is about twenty-seven thousand square feet. When we looked at the internals of that building, it's not quite as efficient as doing a brand-new building, but we were ending up with having the administration and some of the support services for the housing, mental health housing on that level, and then having the psychiatric outpatient and day treatment on the upper level. And that seemed to work out fairly well. We met again after we had done the program revision, done just some really rough conceptual layouts. We met with Public Properties and Sherri's executive committee and kind of refined this to, they thought it was working fairly well for a renovation and addition project. This is the second level of that, showing the, on the right, the lower level of the And again, please interrupt me at any time if you have any questions. So when you're, we have been familiar with the site. A year ago, we did look at doing a new facility on the abandoned building site. So we were pretty familiar with the space program and what your needs were. And again, as I mentioned, we tried to be really efficient with the size of the program. But there's still some unknowns. And, you know, we took a really good attempt at things like earthwork and demolition and tried to get some realistic numbers based upon square footage analysis, et cetera. We also look at historical interior demolition renovation work that we see for a functional type such as this. The more expensive portion of the mental health facility is, of course, housing because it needs to be secure. And so we ended up with having a pretty good layout for the mental housing proportion on both schemes. It works very similar. So we did an analysis of the cost of this and it came up with the construction costs of about twelve million. And you can see the project support of just over two million. And then adding on a 10% project contingency, we've got a lot of unknowns at this stage, this conceptual stage. And inflation is moderating a little bit for construction. In fact, I had an elevator contractor telling me he was really not seeing a lot of projects out to bid right now, which is the first thing I've heard probably maybe in 10 years of that. So maybe the inflation increase that's affecting all of us is stopping some of the construction projects from happening. So maybe that's getting tampered down a little bit. At any rate, we came up with a construction cost of about seventeen million. And at this stage, I think it's prudent to have a range. I could be fat, I could be light. So we went up and down 5% with that and came up with a range of sixteen point four up to eighteen point two to do this project. However, I've got some option notes. You've got thirty-two months left until your funds need to be expended. So the project has to be a fast track project. It cannot be a traditional construction executed project. The other thing about Option A is that it's fully occupied with state employees. So you have an obligation, as all counties have an obligation in Nebraska, to provide Health and Human Services X amount of square feet, which was determined years ago. So that obligation has to be kept. So part of this project requires you to find space for DHHS, probably leased space, I would guess, and then probably some tenant improvements for that. So there's to be a little construction project to get them to have adequate space that meets their program, and then moving costs. So that is not included in this amount and has to be considered. However, going back maybe a little bit, the first level, the housing component, which is, again, probably the highest per square foot construction cost of the project, can happen pretty immediate. You could start, you could design, do a fast direct design and start doing the housing component, which is about ten thousand square feet, while you're trying to make the move with Health and Human Services. So that could happen. The next project is demolishing the eleven oh-one building and providing a new program, excuse me, providing our revised program on that site. The site slopes, probably 10 to 12 feet from south to north. And so having the advantage of including the psychiatric outpatient, day treatment, and administration all on one floor, sharing things like conference rooms and break rooms, et cetera, between the three components makes us a little bit more efficient from a functional flow perspective. And then having the connection with the elevator and stair to the upper level, on the upper right hand of this floor plate, having the housing and the housing support spaces directly across the corridor from the housing. One of the advantages of both of these schemes with housing, from some of the schemes that we did before, including the one at the bus terminal, is not having a double-loaded corridor. You can see that we have a, right now, as most of you know, the mental health patients on the fifth floor of the existing building have to go down the elevator. You lose a lot of security component there to go outside, and they are taken around to a little courtyard. And so having a secure outdoor space, having biophilic design and some of the normalization that the current mental health best practice indicates, and then having from the nurses' station in the center, that green area in the center, being able to see through the outdoor courtyard, through the glass wall of the corridor, be able to see all the circulation that's happening there, is something that I think Sherri and her staff really thought was a much better design. And so on both of these proposals, both of these A and B are having the same advantage. Going forward, this is more expensive because it's all new. We are proposing in this scheme, and I'll go back to the site plan, we're proposing to demolish the eleven oh-one building as part of this and turn that into cleaning up the campus, basically that corner of the campus. That is the first line item under A, site work. One would be the cost for that demolition. And again, it's the same issue as the first option is, basically, we have to, thirty-two months left, we have to do an accelerated design and construction. So that's, I guess, an overview of the study, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. How much appreciated. We're going to jump to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this, Al.
Yep, you're welcome.
So a couple of things on here. You have demolition costs for both of these, demolition, abandoned eleven oh-one building and clear site on Option A. It looks like three hundred eighty-six thousand. And then site demolition clearing near twelve fifteen building, ninety-four thousand. So bumping up on a half billion dollars for demolition costs on the first one. And it looks like approximately the same on Option B. But I couldn't tell from Option B, where it's all new construction, whether you're demolishing the existing HHS building as well?
No.
Okay. So that would just, that would just stay?
Right. Right. So yeah.
Okay. All right. That was a yes or no?
Yes.
And you said?
Yes, sir.
The cost to running these proposed facilities is not something that you have available, I take it. Is that right?
No, no. I think we came up with a cost.
I'm just asking yes or no questions here, Al.
Okay, sorry. Yes.
The Administrative Services Committee, which oversees our property, has not had a public hearing on these proposals, like we did repeatedly, as you know, when we did the hundred and fifty-six and Maple renovation.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And as at a hundred and fifty-six and Maple, that property, which is now one of the best pieces of real estate we have, was, as you've indicated here, like the twelve fifteen building or the eleven oh-one building, abandoned. Abandoned. That nineteen twenty-nine structure was abandoned, which we refurbished with your help.
Yes.
And it's not one of the best that we have. And that was for, I think, maybe under fifteen million dollars?
Yeah, I think you're right. It was approximately fifteen. I think it was a little bit under.
It houses a whole bunch of things, and the square footage would be very similar, the square footage we're talking about here, if not greater, actually.
Well, the entire building, the Serhul, was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet.
There you go.
But, yeah.
Okay. These proposed psychiatric outpatient areas, they look like rooms, individual rooms. And would they have beds in them?
Those are all staff offices.
No, the ones in blue.
Oh, yes, yes.
Those are beds.
Yeah. And that's housing. That's not outpatient.
Okay.
That's residence.
I'm just wondering, how many are there?
There's, there is eight and 10. Eight on one side, 10 on the other.
Okay. How many are there in the facility total?
Well, it would be eighteen. And currently have 16. And there's 18 available in this design. Housing, mental health housing.
I'm just looking at the blue section here. It looks like a lot more than 18 to me.
Well, you're talking about, so around the corridor where the courtyard is are housing. The other blue areas are things like day rooms, staff offices.
Right, right, right. I'm talking about rooms with beds in them. You're saying 18.
There's 18, correct.
Okay. Then there's a lot more for?
Support, day rooms.
Right, day rooms.
Yeah, blue rooms.
Fifty seconds.
Psychiatric.
Yeah, I'll probably have to come back, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The demolition, I don't know if you were here earlier this morning, would be of a building that we just approved.
It's time.
Ninety-four thousand, was it, for asbestos remediation?
We'll have to come back, Commissioner.
Okay.
I've got you on the list, though.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks again for this. I think it was very helpful. It looks like just at a high level, the biggest difference between the two is one of them is using the twelve fifteen building and one of them is not.
Correct.
So I think what would be helpful, and this is probably more of an internal question, is do we have some type of estimate on what it would cost to move DHHS since we are responsible for providing a space for them? That might be, I think that might make a difference in what we do. If it costs, you know, eight million dollars to move them, and this is a five million dollar difference between the two projects, it might be better, of course, to do new construction. So how would we get that information?
Morning. Jeff McGill, Douglas County Public Properties. We will have moving costs, of course, and I would imagine it's probably anywhere from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars to move them. Once we find a place, there's tenant improvement cost, which needs to take place prior to them moving, which typically rolls into a lease space of how much you're paying for rent. We are estimating probably fifteen dollars a square foot, which is about thirty, or three hundred thousand dollars each year.
And Jeff, just to be clear, so I don't understand how it works with DHHS. Do we provide space or do, so do we pay their rent or do they?
We provide space, so.
Okay, so currently, do they, the space we have on the campus?
We own the building and we provide.
So we don't pay anything for that because we own it?
Correct.
So this would be an ongoing cost down the road?
Ongoing cost, yes.
Okay.
We did spend, just for your information, over the past six years, 1.2 million dollars on that building. The state did participate in some of the upgrades with us. So we have one mechanic room. If we choose this, we have two mechanical rooms, which is more, I guess we're doubling the effort of trying to achieve a common goal of maintenance. But for what it's worth, we spent a lot of money on it, and they're very happy where they are. We will have to maintain a leased space building also with maintenance, excluding structure. So this is another added expense over and above the lease.
So you said that if we took over that building, leased space could run fifteen dollars a square foot for whatever space we would get for them in addition to renovation? So how, about how much a year did you say that could cost to provide leased space?
Well, fifteen dollars a square foot is about three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Per year, so three hundred thousand dollars a year to get DHHS, a new space?
Right. And then maintenance costs for us to maintain the building.
Okay, so three hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's what we're guessing.
Okay.
It could be more depending on how much we have to do inside the building.
Okay. And right now, it's nothing, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
It's paid for free rent. All they, I think they just pay for computers, IT equipment, and we provide the rest.
Got it, got it. And then, yep, thank you. And then, Mr. Pravandra, did you say that Sherri, our CMHC director, that she preferred the second plan? Is Sherri here? Oh, there she is.
I'd rather have her tell you what she prefers.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm running out of time, so.
We can always come back.
Yep. We'll ask you in a minute, Sherri. I'm out of time.
Sorry. Sherri Driver, the administrator of the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. Time?
Sorry.
I like both plans.
Okay. Thanks.
We'll come back.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks. Well, Sherri, I have one for you. I ask Al this, and it's not really his purview. How much would it cost to run this? What's the annual cost of staffing and running this facility? Proposal A, let's take them one at a time.
There should be no additional cost to run the Community Mental Health Center. We are going to utilize our current operational costs and relocate them to either of the new We are going to utilize our current operational costs and relocate them to either of the new facilities, whether it be the renovated facility or the new facility.
Okay, so what's that number? I'm asking.
The, our total budget is approximately twenty-two million dollars.
So it costs twenty-two million dollars?
Yes, and then we bring in probably ten, eight to ten million in revenue right now.
From Medicare and Medicaid?
Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance, Region Six behavioral healthcare, grants.
Right. And you, you heard us talk about the beds?
Mm-hmm.
So, we got eighteen beds, I think, in each proposal, right?
Correct.
Okay. These people are staying overnight?
Correct.
What would be the average length of stay of those folks?
Probably five to seven days.
Okay. And that's a increase of our capacity by a couple, from what we have now?
We would actually utilize the same capacity. What it provides us with is an opportunity to be more flexible. So when I need to have ten beds on our step-down unit, I can have ten beds on the step-down unit, but main, but, and then reduce the capacity on our intensive care unit, which is what we do right now.
So, just so I'm clear, we have capacity for eighteen people to stay overnight now?
We have capacity for eighteen, we are only licensed for sixteen due to IMD. We would have to get a special waiver to go above sixteen.
Okay. So, what do we have right now?
Sixteen, well,
Sixteen?
We are, we are licensed for sixteen.
Yeah, okay, so this is an increase of a couple. Okay, thank you. I had this question on the asbestos thing. We just approved a forty-six thousand dollar abatement contract, a bid, for asbestos abatement on 1101 South Forty-second Street, which is proposed to be demolished under this proposal? Why would we abate?
You have to abate a building when you demolish it.
Okay, so the abatement would have to occur whether we demolish it or not?
Correct, and this was in our capital improvement plan, three years prior. Just getting around to do that. Whether that happens or not, we're, we're moving forward on that.
And there haven't been any public hearings on any of this?
No.
Okay. And you, I think, participated along with Al in the, well over a dozen public hearings on the 156 and Maple project, which was a similar county-owned property that we were refurbishing.
That's correct.
Yeah. It didn't cost a fraction of what this is proposed to cost, but it had multiple public hearings so that people could actually weigh in. I don't think it had probably the community interest that mental health does, but it had a lot more hearings.
Fifteen seconds.
Is that it? Oh, thank you. The 1101 building, what's in there now?
It's vacant. HHS used to be there. We removed, we moved them over to the 1215. We have additional space so they can house out of one.
Do I have two minutes?
Yeah, you have a, a third round for two minutes if you want one after we come back. Commissioner Boyle, did you actually want that second round? No, okay, in that case, Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, a lot of these, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a second. So I don't know if this question was asked, but I heard Commissioner Kavanaugh alluding to it a little bit earlier. You did answer the question, Al, the most pertinent question, one of the most pertinent questions I had was grabbing some clarity on that transition with HHS, what that would look like, so that, that stuff has been answered. What I would ask, though, on, on, on the 1215 building and new addition, under A is the site work, the demolition, or, excuse me, the demolish, abandon 1101 building and clear the site, and then site demolition and clearing near 1215. Are there, and, and this could be out of my ignorance, are there cost savings there? So in other words, even if we do, e- e- even if the stars aligned and, and a determination at some point was made that, that for this transition, if we, if we, if we move forward with an initiative like this, if that transition is made and we use that 1215 building and we decide to put a new addition on it, are there cost savings in that demolition? Why does 1101 even need to be demolished?
It doesn't. It doesn't have to be demolished, but it, but our, if you look at this as the existing condition, the, the addition to the 1215 building gets within, you know, fifteen, twenty feet of that building. It also complicates the site work. When you, when I can, you know, that site dips down from the 1215 building and then rises up to the second floor of the 1101 building. So for us to do the addition, we have to bring that art, that earthwork for the addition of 1215 out flat. And then, we would have to probably do retaining walls or some complicated solution to stop the earthwork at that point where, where it's getting, you know, within twenty feet of the other building. So it ju- it just simplifies the earthwork. It probably makes it simpler. And then the other, the other thing is that building's gonna continue to deteriorate. I think that's a public property's point. It's, you know, it, it's not in great shape now, it's falling apart, and it's just cleaning up the site as part, as part of the project. But yes, but can you, can you keep both, can you keep it? Yes, it just complicates the earthwork.
Okay, understood, and that, that's a, that helps. Sherry's gonna kill me when I say this. She can kill me later. Or now. The new addition, how, how much flexibility do we have? Here's my point, and anybody can answer this. We're taking, we, we could, if the initiative moves forward in this board, after a certain, probably a rapid period of time, determine that we were gonna move forward with the HHS building at 12, uh, 1215. How much flexibility do we have there? So in other words, if they move out, if we renovate the HHS building, why does a new addition, is it a showstopper? Why does it have to be to the dimensions that it is? What if, what if this board said, you know what? No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna narrow this down a little bit. How much space does Sherry need? Is, does she need all of it? I have a feeling she's gonna say yes. What could get the job done if we actually, if we actually enhance this? Right?
Well, she's gonna, she's gonna kick me, she's gonna kick, kick, kick me to answer this, but the, the, the solution is, is to abandon the housing program.
That's time. Thank you.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, did you want your third round? Alright, this is a two-minute round.
Al, just real quick. You had mentioned that the, there is a time element here. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody's clear on this. When you said you have thirty-two months left, you have thirty-two months left to commit these resources. You don't have thirty-two months left to complete this construction. ARPA says, as long as it's committed and underway, you're okay. You don't have to complete it by that date.
That's not my understanding. My understanding is every penny has to be spent by December thirty-first.
No, no, every penny has to be committed, not, it's the same thing when you commit to a contract. You have spent the money, you have obligated the money. I believe the, the statutory term actually is obligated the, the funds, not committed the project, not cut the ribbon.
Far be it for me to, to, to argue with an attorney.
I just wanna make sure that that's a, a topic that's clarified, because I don't wanna have this idea that we gotta rush, rush, rush into this multimillion-dollar construction project. We've been down this road recently in the past, and it's not twenty-six months to cut the ribbon on this or any other project. That's not what the lawyers say. That's not what the law says.
Can Patrick comment on that, or do you wanna?
Oh, yeah, please.
So there's two deadlines. One is to commit the, the funds to a specific project or projects by the end of this year.
I'm sorry, Patrick?
Patrick Blimmingdale County Administrator. The first deadline is to obligate the funds for a specific project or projects by the end of 2024. Then the money must be spent by the end of 2026. So, that's to clarify what you said, there are, there are two deadlines. Obligate by the end of 2024, actually spend by the end of 2026.
Exactly, and the spending of the money is not tied to construction. We can spend the money, and the construction is ongoing beyond the 2026 deadline.
Really, the only way that I think that you can do that is that you would have to give the funds to the construction company before the project is actually completed. Normally, you pay over time to make sure that the project gets done. You pay during the project ongoing, they submit invoices as you go. The risk of giving the money to them before that happens is that something happens, they drag their fee because they've already got their money, the project isn't done to your satisfaction, but they've already been paid, and you have to try to get some of that money back. So,
Right, and you have all kinds of legal options at that point. As a matter of fact, that's exactly what was done on the kids' jail, where we committed the money and we spent the money, and it was out of our hands way, way before the construction of the kids' jail was done.
That's not accurate, no.
It was out of Douglas County's hands way before the, the kids' jail construction.
That was a bond issue, so that was a different situation. That's a bond, that was a bond issue that we did, so that was a different situation.
The construction way, went way after the money was actually committed and, and spent and turned over to the construction management company that ultimately expended all of the hundred and nineteen plus. This was not a public property, I understand, this was not a public property operation.
I understand, but I don't,
Twenty-five seconds.
I believe the extra funds would turn back to the county or to the bond council.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I think, I believe the extra funds that were available were turned back to the Douglas County or Building Commission. And I don't believe we did have a time to spend the money.
I don't believe you were involved with the expenditure of the money on the kids' jail project at all.
Well, it was the total project.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Al, and Jeff and Sherry for these two proposals. And I think Commissioner Boyle hit on one of the issues that I have with the 1215 building, and that is the relocation and then additional cost of that provision of us having to provide space for HHS. So, the new building actually looks in the long run to be the cost saver and more attractive. Plus, just some general issues here that moving, again, we've talked about this for years and years, but never had this opportunity to, to do this in moving our Community Mental Health Center out of our nursing home, where people actually call it their home. They live there. And by freeing up the space on the fifth floor where the current Community Mental Health Center is, we actually could use that to reduce the number or get rid of the total number of the three and four bedroom rooms that we have on the nursing home, which again, we've talked about for years. And then, the demolition of the 1101 building has been talked about for years that we've needed to do it, and this is a good opportunity, again, for us to be able to do this. But, in general, I just wanna say again, I appreciate Al's work on this and Sherry and Jeff's for bringing these recommendations to us. We have had numerous, numerous, numerous discussions on this as a board and committee and to the public. And these are, again, it's an option in location versus really anything else. And lastly, in a time where we as a board, we as a county, as a state, across this country, mental health is, if not the top, I think it is, the top talked about issue across the board. This is a time for us to step up and really show that we have, we're behind those, we're behind the mental health issue and providing good, quality services in a new facility that will even be better than what we have right now. The staff and Sherry have done amazing work in that building, and I commend you for that. But I think that this is our time to allow them to shine even more with one of these two options in providing mental health services to our community. And so, again, I appreciate the opportunity to look at these two proposals. And again, I, I do hope that we move quickly on this, because we've talked about it for a long, long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll take a round. Sherry, as our, our program director, is there anything additional you'd like to add?
Thank you. Sherry Driver, Director of the Community Mental Health Center. One of the things that I wanna say is that I wouldn't sacrifice this project by not doing the acute psychiatric inpatient beds. I will advocate, I will fight tooth and nail for a minimum for us to have those eighteen beds. That is the core of what we do at the Community Mental Health Center. We have a phenomenal continuum of care, and if we got rid of those beds just to do outpatient care, I'm gonna say shame on me, as the administrator of the Community Mental Health Center, for not advocating and fighting tooth and nail for that. I will tell you that yesterday, a hundred percent of the clients that we had on acute care were either board of mental health petitioned, committed, and we had one person that was voluntary by guardian. So, that's our mandate, that's what we're supposed to be doing. If we get rid of the Community Mental Health Center, if we get rid of the beds that we have in our continuum of care, who are we hurting? We're hurting our community. And I guess that's, these projects are great. The work that has been done by this team is phenomenal. We have been at, this is the fourth time that we have been at this. We have listened to the community, we have heard the community, we have adjusted our plans for the community, and now I say, let's act on it for the community. I apologize if I am being over-passionate, but I think that's what you guys hired me to do. And so, I will, I will, I will stand up here as much as I have to, and if I have to disagree with individuals on the board, respectfully, I will do so. Move this forward, please, for our community.
Thank you, Sherry, and as a reminder, this is the latest evolution of an extended conversation from the joint facility we talked about with Corrections about two and a half years ago, to the Jackson Facility, to, there actually was a rendering on Forty-second and Wolver campus at one point. Actually, between the Jackson Facility and the large joint facility, there was a rendering for Forty-second campus at that point, about two years ago. And then, the topic was a little dormant for a few months there, but we are revisiting that same topic that has been going on for about two and a half years now. Let's see, any other comment on this? I don't know. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, Sherry corrected it, but I just wanna maybe change the narrative in, when we're, it's really not housing, it's acute inpatient beds, and so we need to be clear on that. We're not housing people in either one of these facilities, wherever we go, even what we do today. It's not housing, it is acute inpatient care. And we, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that, 'cause there's definitely two different meanings when we talk about those things.
Thank you. Other comments? If not, this is a presentation today. Thank you, Louise. Go for it.
Louise Semens, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. I don't think you're in an accelerated pace. I think you're in a very, very slow pace, and it, and you're in a slow pace because of the money, not because of the design. The, the funding, the funding that these two options assign, or the budget, is twenty, close to twenty million dollars. And I think that a and I think that a standalone facility needs to be comprised of a a behavioral-based service. And so, for that, I think you need more than twenty million dollars. You can call it acute, whatever, I think it's behavioral, but a standalone building needs to cost more than twenty million dollars, but you're not going to do that, so that's, that's the delay. Any design will work for a building, but the issue is the location. And I think this is the wrong location for this project. If you're going to move mental health facility, community mental health facility from its current location, then you just need to move it out of the area. Down, down here, you have two locations, you have the Vantage Point location and you have Jackson Street location, and that is going to, is to the point, you're going where the services are needed, and if you need to deal more holistically with mental health, you have partners that will, can help you with that. I know UNMC has building upon building that they need to program. So, beyond the behavioral and beyond the acute mental health, they can help the citizens of Douglas County. But for the indigent, the people that are in criminality, the people who are in, suffering from behavioral issues, a, a facility downtown will really uplift the community, and I, I don't know what, what this project is, you, like I said, you knew you have a building and, you know, Mr. Garcia, you said that you looked at an option, well, this is the same option, you just redesigned it. You didn't go with it because you understood that a an area for mental health would best suit the community downtown. So, I'm, I implore you to get funds that amount to close to thirty million dollars and build a facility downtown for the community mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, other comments on this item? If not, as, as mentioned, this is a presentation today, we're not taking action today, so there will be more conversation, even though we're on a tight timeline, today is not the day we're going to take action. So, that concludes our presentation, thank you, Mr. McGill, Mr. Pavandra, Sherry, as always, thank you so much. We'll move to our committee discussions. In six A, we have finance budget report as presented. In G1, we have the weekly personnel report from civil service. We do have a need for executive session for litigation, legal advice, and labor negotiations. Do I have a motion in a second? Motion by Rogers, second by Front, please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, the board will now go into executive session for litigation, legal advice, and labor negotiations.
Recording stopped.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, reconvening adjourned. Second by Commissioner Borgeson. Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Friend is absent. We are adjourned at 11:24 a.m.